And we'll, um, we'll check in. Sue?
Sue Rappley-Morrell.
Jess?
Jessica Dapsis-Hebron.
Judy?
Judy Benson-Clerk-Mallboro.
Joe?
Joel Connor-Hebron.
Vin?
Vin Colonna-Hebron.
Rob?
Rob Shattle-Hebron.
Kathleen?
Kathleen Goodwin-Hebron.
And I'm Stephanie Bancroft from Andover. And Scott? Want to introduce yourself?
Oh, you, uh, me, Scott, as opposed to Scott Flear.
Yeah.
Scott Leslie, um, right now, I'm still principal of Ram High School. Tomorrow at midnight, I'll turn into the acting superintendent.
Okay.
So you need to be nice to me for the next few hours.
All right. And, um, Jean is not with us? No? And Dave is not with us? Okay. And, um, I know that Scott Flear, it won't, will not be able to make it because he has, um, a commitment with his daughter tonight. So. Okay. Um, everyone, this is Patrice McCarthy, um, from Cave, and she has been gracious enough to come tonight to our meeting to talk about communications and, um, roles of the board. And, um, I think I will give her the floor. So welcome, Patrice.
Thank you very much. And having done many meetings over the course of many years, I will admit this is my first, uh, one-on-one workshop with an individual Board of Education. So it's a little different feel than a webinar or a national conference, uh, but I'm delighted to be with you tonight. Uh, I wish I could see all of you at once. Uh, my screen doesn't quite allow for that. So, um, I'm going to give you some basics that come from my understanding of what I think, uh, some of the topics that you're interested in. But then let's make this very interactive because I'm really here to try and answer your questions. But there is, when we talk about Board of Ed Communications, there are certain legal parameters that I have to lay out there. Um, now, in this virtual life that we're all living, it becomes even easier perhaps to say, oh, I'll just send an email to the whole board and see what they think about this. Because, you know, we, we don't have those informal chats that we sometimes had before. We actually convened in a formal board meeting. Um, we're not running into people in the grocery store quite as much, probably. We're not seeing them at the soccer fields. So let me just send an email to everyone. Well, based on the Freedom of Information Act in Connecticut, if there is a communication to a quorum of the Board of Education over a matter of board business, not over, um, gee, when do you think the local grocery store is going to reopen? Uh, but a matter of board business, that would violate the Freedom of Information Act. And the problem becomes while the sender may think they're just sending some information like, um, here's some information about plans that some districts have for reopening school in September. The problem then becomes one or more of the board members respond to that and say, I think that's a terrible plan, or I think that's great. And that actually is a discussion that needs to happen when you're convened in a public meeting. Uh, even if it's a virtual public meeting like this one is, that it is a meeting that's accessible to the public as opposed to those series of email communications. Um, it used to be back in the old days when we had rotary dial telephones. Some of you may remember those. Uh, what would happen is a board chair might say, well, I'm going to call all the members of the board and just check in with them and see what they think about this new proposal that's going to be out of agenda next week. Well, those series of individual phone calls, the Freedom of Information Commission over the years found violated the Freedom of Information Act because they ended up constituting discussions that should be held at the public meeting. Uh, the same thing now applies if you do a group text. Um, it could even occur if you post something on Facebook that has to do with board business. And then the board members start interacting and essentially having a discussion, even if it's in a, a virtual environment. Um, there was a case involving the Region One School Board a number of years ago where one board member replying to that initial email, the commission ruled that that constituted an inappropriate meeting. Uh, there was another case where the board chair, when someone sent something out to the whole board, the board chair responded to everyone saying, don't reply all. We need to have this conversation at a board meeting. The commission even found that that board chair's, uh, message of, don't talk about this created an illegal meeting. So it, I know it seems extreme, but my job is to lay out, here are the parameters. And it's not that, you know, there are huge financial penalties. You violate the Freedom of Information Commission, uh, Freedom of Information Act ones. They say, you know, you have to go to a Freedom of Information workshop as your punishment. But what happens is it creates this net, this constant sort of upheaval because it takes months and now it will take probably years for these decisions to be reached. So when one member of the public complains, um, and files a complaint with the commission, it then becomes the biggest social media item, you know, even bigger than when and where graduation will be held. And it just keeps churning a whole lot of unnecessary, um, negative notoriety for, for a board. Uh, and just, uh, as an aside, it's not so much on the communication side, but emails do create a public record. If they are, for instance, when the superintendent sends an email to the board with information, background for the board meeting, that is a public record that if someone requests that, those documents, they need to be made available, uh, to them. Uh, and the same, the same would be true of a text or, or an instant message if, if that was communicating about board business. So I think I'm going to stop there. Um, you do have a, a board bylaw provision. It's bylaw nine, three, two, five that provides that board members shall not use email as a substitute for public deliberations. So, um, that's, you know, you've actually codified as a board and that that bylaws are essentially the law of the district in addition to the state statutes that govern your, your conduct of, as a public agency. So I'm going to stop and see what questions you have.
Um, I think one of the, the biggest questions I have is, um, questions for the superintendent. Um, if you have a question for the superintendent, um, and you, and the superintendent certainly wants those questions in advance so they can answer them in board meetings or, or, um, weekly updates um, or in general at any time. Um, what would be, is email the appropriate thing to use? And, and if not, what is? I mean, that, that's, it seems like.
Okay. So, um, that's really a conversation to have with your inform superintendent because it, administrators and boards handle this differently. One of the important things to remember is if it's a simple request for information or, you know, and it's an agenda item and a board member feels they need more information, that heads up to the superintendent before the meeting is, you're absolutely right, very critical. Because that means the administration can be prepared with the information. Um, not every answer is, you know, going to be off the top of their head available, uh, if it's not asked until you get to the board meeting. So if you know you have a question, definitely give a heads up. How that happens depends upon what the district, what the board and the superintendent have decided works best. In some districts, those questions go through the board chair. If it turns out it's a question that requires substantial research, you know, documentation about, um, high school graduates and their success rate in college going back five years, that if the district hasn't been collecting that data, is not readily available. Then that, that should not be an individual board member's, uh, request that immediately gets honored because that's going to be a workload issue for the central office. And so that should then be a board decision. Is this information important enough? Mr. Superintendent, how much time, staff time will it take to compile it? And then let's decide as a board if that's a priority for right now.
Um, Patrice, this is Judy. Um, I just want to share a little bit of background on this board. At this point, I'm the longest-serving member on the Ram Board, um, followed by Joe at this point as, as Dave is stepping down for personal reasons. And where this began, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, is it began in a meeting with Tom Mooney, Bob Siminski, and someone else, a board retreat. When, um, when, because we're a regional board at one point, and I don't even know who it was, but someone felt like one group or individual or someone had inside information and other towns weren't aware. So I think when it was, um, and I can't remember the language or the guidelines, but when it was something that, um, it, that was easily answered or wasn't something that had to be researched or something that it could be just given to everybody. So everybody stayed, um, abreast of what was going on. But, you know, at this point, I can't even remember the particulars. So I, I, but that was the intent of how that happened. So there wouldn't be just, um, and I don't think it's true, but through time, we've unfortunately heard the term Hebron High. And sometimes, um, Mallboro or Andover has, has felt left out. I don't feel that way, but I happen to live in one of those towns. And people have said, you know, make sure you know that you're not the last one to know. So I, I, I really have amazing respect for this word. And I don't think anybody's trying to violate anything, but I think we want to thread the needle between making sure everybody has access to equal information and, um, certainly respecting, um, state guidelines and FOI guidance and adhere to all of that.
Yeah. And, and that's a very important point. Whatever information the superintendent is providing, um, at the request of one or more board members should be provided to the entire board. Uh, because it may be a question there or a piece of information that is of common concern. Uh, in addition to the issue of, in a regional district, making sure that everyone has the same information and, uh, feels that they're on the same page.
Vince, did you have, um, a question?
Yes, Stephanie. Um, hi, Patrice. Uh, just a question relating to topics that start off as logistics. Like, you know, we want to have a meeting on this topic. What are the dates that work? Um, and, and the times and so on and so forth. And everybody responds. And then it kind of gets off tangent and goes about, you know, should this be a subcommittee meeting? Should this be, you know, should we be talking about this situation or that situation? You know, what about situations like that where it starts like logistics and then kind of goes off on tangents?
Yeah, that, that then becomes a slippery slope and that you run the danger. The communications around setting the time and date of meetings, you know, a doodle poll about who's available, which, which night, that's fine. That does not violate FOI. There's a, there's a specific exception for those communications. Um, but the danger is what you've just highlighted when then it becomes a discussion of, well, is this really, should, does this belong in a subcommittee? Um, short of the, the chair, you're laterally making that decision or perhaps in consultation with the superintendent. I think you probably are going to have to bring it to the board, you know, in a, in a regular meeting, um, or a special meeting and decide, gee, we think this is going to be best to give this to the subcommittee.
And I think, I, this is Judy. Again, I think to follow up, some of what has, um, happened, we've had a lot of chairs in a short time. And I, I, I think whether they're justified or not, I think there are trust issues of whether communication then does go forward, or some people have felt like their communication is blocked or, or stifled. And Patrice, let me give you an example of what I did. And this, this may have been, this may have been wrong, but I want to give you the why I did this. Probably back in March or April, I sent a picture of a public high school in Pennsylvania that had, um, signs with student pictures on them to the entire board. And the reason I did that and to the principals was, and, and this may have been wrong, so I'm looking for your guidance. But I didn't want to just be, um, you know, a clicker showing the, just the board chair because she too has a senior and I had a senior. I didn't want it to be a personal interest. I wanted, you know, everybody to see some of the kinds of things that, that, that were out there. And I, I mean, I don't think that violates, but I don't know, these things get strange.
You know, in, in these very challenging times, uh, things that people might not have thought, given a second thought to a year ago, um, you know, can end up pressing, pressing buttons inadvertently. Uh, certainly sharing information of any kind is, is perfectly appropriate. Obviously, the, it can be perceived differently, especially if the sender is the parent of a senior. Or if, if you had sent something out about, um, uh, middle school foreign language and you happen to have a middle schooler. It, it might be perceived as a, um, a message of, boy, this is something we really need to, to pursue.
Mm-hmm. That's fair. Thank you. I think, um, one of the, the things that, um, crossed my mind a while back is we got into a really good regular schedule of subcommittees, um, a, over a year ago. And, um, the subcommittee reports during board meetings really don't reflect what, what really goes on. So people were in the habit of asking the superintendent questions, um, pertaining especially to the subcommittees and, and to, and asking and letting the whole board see the questions. Now, I found those extremely helpful because it gave me some insight as to what was going on in other subcommittees. Um, and I think we all knew at that point that we weren't supposed to be starting discussions on them. But I really appreciated being able to see those questions. Um, and then when we went to, you know, having to go through the board chair, I think a lot of us were frustrated with that because we felt like we were suddenly in, in a, um, a news blackout. Um, and, um, so, so how, what, what is your response to that?
Um, that sort of goes to, to a challenge that boards face periodically, which is, are their subcommittees really working? In other words, if there is trust that the subcommittee is doing its work and will make a recommendation or a report to the full board, then the need to delve into those details and have the superintendent take some of his or her time to sort of fill in the details essentially defeats the purpose of the subcommittee. That maybe that is an issue that should go to the full board from the beginning for full discussion by all of the members.
Okay.
So if you see that happening on a regular basis, to, to us, that's usually a sign that, gee, maybe one or more of the subcommittees aren't really appropriate at this point, given the interest of the board members in having, in many of the board members having a lot of the detailed information. Because you're essentially just having the superintendent almost redo for you the work that presumably the subcommittee has already done.
Okay. So, um, well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking in particular of a subcommittee that's very involved in a, in a lot of things. Um, I, I don't think that subcommittee should, should be disbanded in any way because they do a lot of work. Um, but are you saying that the subjects that there are questions on should those, those subject, that subject matter should be brought to full board discussion rather than brought back to subcommittee?
It, it sounds to me like that that might be the situation. Uh, so not to span the subcommittee, but make clear what the scope of their work is versus the issues that need to come to the, directly to the full board. What you want to do is avoid duplicating time and effort on behalf of members of the subcommittee and, um, and by the superintendent, especially with a relatively small central office.
Is that, is that something, um, I'm thinking, Stephanie, with you and Scott, that you can be, um, kind of evaluating as we go along, um, and, and helping that to happen? Because I agree, that subcommittee, I think if you're talking about facilities, honestly, we could not bring those meetings to the board meetings. And I applaud them. They spend hours and hours and hours. I, um, I respect their expertise. I sometimes reach out to them, you know, individually to get something cleared up just because they understand engineering, um, better than I do, having degrees in engineering. Um, but I think, you know, I'm, I'm wondering, Stephanie, not as just a yes or no answer, but if that's something you and Scott can be, can be figuring out as we go forward. Because I think for whatever reason, whether it was fair or not, I, and I'm not speaking for myself, but I think there were some, um, some trust issues. Yeah, I think, I think that that's definitely something that, that Scott and I could talk about, um, whether, and, and put on the, put on agendas, um, if, if we think that there's a, a question that, that should go to the board. Um.
Stephanie, can I ask, just for clarification, when you say like a subcommittee would ask questions, are you saying that they would ask questions of the superintendent?
Yes.
In order to inform, to inform like the next subcommittee meeting? So it's taking place outside of the, outside of the, the main, the, the main board meeting. Um, but a subcommittee may feel like they need clarifying questions on an issue so that they can maybe better do their work?
Yeah. So, so they can, they can, um, understand where, where to go next or, um, any, anybody in facilities want to elaborate?
Stephanie, are these members of the subcommittee that are asking the questions of the superintendent or other members of the board that are not part of the subcommittee? I thought it was a matter when I answered.
I think it's, it's a subcommittee, um, the subcommittee members, the, that are asking the questions for, um, more, um, clarification for their next meeting, um, where, where a project is going, um, you know.
Very different. I, I under, I thought the question was if other members of the board were looking for more information about the work of the subcommittee.
No, I, I was just saying that, um, when, for example, before I became a member of the fi, the, the facilities, um, subcommittee, um, I'm on it now, but, um, I, I found the questions that were asked, um, interesting. And, um, it helped me understand what was going on, you know, in those subcommittees. Cause I think everybody should, you know, at least know what's going on. And sometimes the, the reports during meetings are very, very basic. So, um, yeah, so I, I was interested in their questions and interested in the answers to the questions. So it just, inquiring minds, you know? It gives me more questions, actually. I, I mean, I guess I will say that I really respect the work that that subcommittee does, especially because of how much expertise we have, how much time they spend, how much, um, not only money do I think we save preventatively, but how much better the campus looks. So sometimes the subcommittee asks a question of the superintendent. And I don't know if that's right or wrong, but I like it because I feel like I'm being educated or I am learning. And I feel like that subcommittee, more than any subcommittee, has really gone out of its way to educate the community and the rest of the board. Like they don't make us feel not smart, but they try to, try to teach us and get us to understand. And, and that's been important for me because I, I don't do the day in and day out for a living. So like, can they ask questions of the superintendent with us copied? Or is that not advisable? Is there a better way to do that?
It's not a problem if you're copied. The problem becomes if you then start a discussion. That, that's the.
Okay.
That's, you've really got to police yourself to say, okay, I see there was an interesting question posed. And I'm going to wait to see the, see what the superintendent's answer is.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Now.
This is a case where we.
Stephanie, could, Stephanie, could I ask one question?
Sure, Rob. Go ahead.
So i, i, in response to that, what happens if I ask a question to the superintendent? And then they in return ask me to clarify that question? Like, let's say I had a broad statement and they wanted to narrow it down. Is that something they can do reply all? Or is that something where I should reach out to the superintendent individually?
Yeah, I, I, I would reach out individually. It just becomes, it, it really does lead down a road that, um, it becomes very hard to make sure that no one's going to weigh in with a, like, another clarifying question, which then really does turn into a discussion.
So basically, we're, we're allowed to ask the one question and then after that, we should go to individual conversations?
Right, right. Either you pick up the phone or the superintendent picks up the phone and you figure out what is that piece of information you need for the next subcommittee meeting?
Excellent. Thank you.
That, Patrice, would you recommend that? That seems smart, the phone at that point, to make sure it's clear.
Yeah. I, and it can save a lot of time, too. Uh, you know, this, this virtual life that we're leading, the number of emails that go back and forth where if we just picked up a phone or pop, or were able to pop into each other's office, um, it saves a lot of time and confusion.
Okay. Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, thanks, Stephanie. Uh, hi, Patrice. Joel Connor.
How are you?
Good. How are you? Um, great, great conversation so far. I, I, I picked up and wrote some notes on some of those statements you made. So the first statement, uh, question I guess I have or clarification really would be, you mentioned that, um, the board and the board chair determine how our communication is going to be to the superintendent, correct?
That is correct.
So that's a board and chair conversation, not a board-chair-only conversation?
Yes, it, it should, there should be a meeting of the minds with the board as to how things are going to operate.
Okay. So, uh, in, in our past, we've had communication from our, one of our previous board member chairs that has told us that this is the way it was supposed to be done by most groups, that our questions go to the board chair directly. Um, and we never really had a set policy on that other than what we were told by the board chair. So it really is a decision that's made mutually by the board chair and the board in whole, how are you going to, um, communicate effectively with questions to the, to the superintendent?
That's right. Within, I would also say very strongly with input from the superintendent. Because if the superintendent says hearing from 11 individual board members, or in some other district, nine individual board members, is impeding the progress of getting the priorities of this district accomplished, then boards have had, have stepped back and said, okay, that system was all right at some point in time, but it's gotten unmanageable, unproductive for the district. So now we need to reassess how we communicate.
Okay, great. Understood that. Uh, the second question I had is, um, so when you send an email to the superintendent and you CC the full board on that email, does that constitute a conversation in public?
That, uh, if you just send an email with a question and no one else responds, that's fine. That doesn't violate FOI. The prom, the danger becomes when one other person now hits reply all and says, um, I, I, I understand the question and I absolutely don't think that the board should go down that route.
I understood. I heard that loud and clear. Thank you. Um, the second question, or the third question is, is, um, and I'm going to use myself is because this is the, this is exactly what happened. So I, and during the budget process, sent an email to the superintendent with, uh, the, the morning of our Board of Education meeting to inform the superintendent that I was going to be, um, uh, giving suggestions. giving suggestions or recommendations for the budget process. And I copied the entire board on that email to give the full board a heads up that night of the meeting. And nobody replied. Does that constitute, constitute a violation?
Based on those fact, you, you didn't lay out what you were going to present. You just said, I'm going to be presenting.
No, I did, I did, I did make recommendations. Yes.
I, I can't tell you for sure how the Freedom of Information Commission has ruled on that one. I would say that's probably getting close to the line of what they would say should have had the discussion at the meeting, but I.
We, we, we did, we did have the discussion at the meeting. It's, it's given, my view was giving courtesy to the board chair, answer the board superintendent, to the superintendent that these questions will be coming up tonight. And by the way, this was in a virtual conversation. Uh, so, uh, different, a bit of a different arena, but, uh, I, I, that's, that's exactly what transpired. So I, I see that, I don't see how that's a difference in my view, uh, from a legal perspective. Because if I was, um, I followed up on that in, in virtual conversation, with that plan and recommendations that were, which I would have been entitled to on the common ground of, as an, as a full board member to, uh, present my recommendations or my wishes during a public meeting.
And Joe, I, I think we, I, I mean, I know we have an attorney who looked into it and, you know, it was very clear with me that there was not a violation. But, and I think, I think one of the things that's important there is you or whatever, you weren't changing something or drastically changing something. You had maybe a question. You didn't say it had to happen. And then there was a full discussion, which is recorded of people going back and forth, um, and weighing in and debating and asking more questions and the superintendent, like maybe the head of maintenance or something, um, managed it. So I, I think, I think it is a little bit, it is a little bit trickier in, in that way. But I think, I think our understanding right now, um, Patrice is, from our attorney is that it was not?
Go ahead.
Well, I, I, thanks Judy. I just want to just follow up at just understanding that, for me personally, understanding the difference. If I, I think someone already asked this question. If I ask a question to the superintendent on a facilities committee and I ask a financial question, uh, you know, and I, we reply all to the course, on the correspondence and the superintendent weighs back and tells us, hey, this is, this is what, uh, this is what the, the nets cost for the 316 field and everybody knows. That is, isn't that the same? Have I asked a question? I asked a question on, on a specific and the full board knew. And when you're sharing information, that really is sharing information. Whether I make a, a presentation that evening and getting heads up to people that we didn't have that conversation. Hey, look, I'm gonna talk about this at this, at the, at the next level, which will be tonight. I don't see that, that, how that is different than, um, asking a, a question on a finance or, or a policy and copying the full board.
It, it probably isn't different in terms of your initial communication. The day, it, it probably creates a greater danger that inadvertently someone will violate FOI because they will feel the need to get into the substance. Because it's not just a, you know, it's, it's along the lines of a presentation as opposed to, I have a factual question, how much do those nets cost?
Understood. The last question I have is procedure on setting the agenda. Uh, I heard, I heard two different things. So what is the guidance for, um, a board, a regional board of setting the agenda? With, you know, communicating, uh, effectively to the board? Now, so, uh, so the question is, I want to add, or I want to suggest, I know what the policy is. Three of us can, can ask to have an item added to the agenda. We go through the board chair. But if, when you ask that question and you copy all to the board and ask for something to be added to the agenda, how is that construed as, as, um, a violation or if it is not construed as a violation?
I, I'm not sure. I haven't, I admit, I haven't, didn't look at the, um, RAM policy in terms of adding items to the agenda or, or requesting that items be on the agenda. It doesn't sound like a violation to me based on how you've described it. It is certainly true that, um, there are often situations where a superintendent and a board chair will say, all right, we, we will have, we will have that discussion, but we can't do it at the next meeting because either the administration needs to gather information and they don't have enough time to do that, or our agenda is already too full. We need to have a, you know, this is gonna require a substantive discussion. So yes, we're going to put it on an agenda, but not necessarily next week.
Understood. Cause we've had problems in the past, many, many years ago with requesting things to be added to the agenda through, per the policy and things would never get on the agenda, you know, because, you know, they just, they maybe didn't seem important enough, you know, but, uh, so, um, but effective communication, letting someone know that request to add or, or ask for something to be on the agenda is a conversation that goes through the board chair. And there's no issues with CCing the full board as long as they do not reply?
That's right.
Thank you, Joe, for that question. I, you know, um, I always wondered during, um, when the looking at regionalizing or whatever it was, regionalism, and a lot of the, uh, state was having meetings or talking about it on, at their board meetings. I requested for that to be on our agenda and I, I know Dave did as well. And we were told nobody else on the board, um, was interested in even discussing that. How, how would the, the board chair know that? Or how can that be decided? I, I guess I'm, I really am confused. It was not sent to the entire board. It was a question around that, remember that hands off of our schools movement and that, um, regionalization or regionalism push? So that's only, I think, a year ago, really. But, but we wanted to just at least discuss it as a board, but we were told there was no interest by the board. And how would we know that or, or trust that if, if the whole board didn't know or wasn't aware or we didn't know they were?
Yeah, again, I, I think if it's a request of, of three members of the board to, to have that discussion, regardless of how, that is, that the end result of the discussion may be, all right, that was an interesting discussion and we're not going to, to pursue this any further. But it was an issue of certainly, um, statewide concern at the time. So I, I think when it's, it's the request of three members, that's, that's the process.
So what we can do is going forward, I mean, just work with Scott and Stephanie and like Joe said, just have that good communication?
The, the communication is key. I mean, now more than ever, um, you know, there are just so many uncertainties that, that our school districts are, are facing and, and will continue to face, that the communication and, and, and building that trust is so important.
Yeah.
Those are the things that you actually have more control over than what the statistics about the spread of the virus will be in.
Okay, that's a great point.
As a follow-up question to the three people, so when you have three people that want to either request a meeting or, um, add an agenda item, how do you, walk me through the process of how do I start that conversation with board members?
You, you can talk to two colleagues that's less than a quorum of the board and, you know, make that request then, uh, to the board chair.
Okay, thank you.
Patrice, is, is it three board members specifically so that it doesn't hit a quorum and?
That, that's the policy of most boards. Uh, it's the most common policy. And yes, that, you avoid that problem. I do want to emphasize in terms of adding things to the, you know, in terms of having discussions about things, again, we are in such uncertain waters right now that making sure that the board and the administration stays focused on the priorities of the week and the month is more important now than ever. And that doesn't diminish the importance of discussions of some, of, of a whole variety of other issues. But if the, if the focus for the next board meeting needs to be, so how would we transport students if they needed to be, um, physically six feet apart? Other things may have to, to, um, be deferred to another agenda.
Yeah. And Patrice, just, just so I'm clear, so board members can, can ask the superintendent questions, factual questions. They can CC the rest of the boards, so everybody knows what's being asked. And I'm at liberty to share the factual answers if it's going to inform a facilities meeting or a policy meeting or even prep people for a regular board meeting. But if somebody is asking me, what is my opinion on, on X? Then that really is an answer. I should respond saying, ask me the question, let's, let's discuss that at, at the meeting under this agenda item so that we don't start that dialogue. So as a superintendent, my role is to provide factual information to support the board in making their decisions and hold off on the, the opinions and, and suggestions for the formal meetings, whether it be a policy, a, a subcommittee or a, um, regular board meeting.
Um, I have a question regarding, um, setting agenda items. Is it appropriate for the chair to send out an email to the board saying, does anybody have any agenda items they would like to see? And then is it, um, appropriate for, for them to reply all? Or should I say, please contact me individually if you have, um, agenda items you would like to see in the meeting?
I, I would recommend, there, there's not a law about this, but I think the best practice is, yes, I think the email is a great idea. And you may also count it in terms of for the upcoming meeting or for a future meeting. So that you make clear the expectation that you're not necessarily light on agenda items for next week and you're, you're looking for some. But I do think then having them, uh, contact you directly is the best.
Individually. Okay, so earlier in the conversation, you, you mentioned having a clause at the end of an email saying, please do not respond to this email could be a problem. And I think when we all really started to be cognizant of, of this, that, that clause started to happen to make sure that no one hit reply all. So now, now I'm hearing that, that we can't say that. Is that true?
No, no, let me clarify. This was where the board chair sent out a subsequent email saying that, that the board chair initiated an email to all board members saying, don't reply to this. It wasn't part of the original communication, in other words.
Okay.
I, I personally, I think that case is an outlier, but I use it, it, it is a, a true Connecticut case. So I use it as an example to show that even with the best intentions, you can end up on the wrong side of the Freedom of Information Act.
Okay, so it's okay for me to have that clause on the initial communication to the board? Okay.
In big letters.
In big letters, okay. Um, also, it's okay to, to, um, communicate with the entire board a question on meeting times and dates, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Patrice, can you share, um, so we understand some of what we, we can share. And I'm not sure that I think we have a lot of violation, but, um, of FOI. But, but could you share what very clearly we, we can't share? Like what would constitute an illegal meeting just for our education?
Well, I'll answer the illegal meeting question, but, um, it raises another issue. Confidentiality of student and employee, um, particularly with respect to personnel issues, employees, i- is critical. And therefore those would not generally be, that information would not be communicated by email because of the great risk of, you know, somebody inadvertently sends it on somewhere else. And there's a way to get it back. Um, so illegal meetings. Anytime a quorum of the board has a discussion about an issue of board business, that is an illegal meeting. So you're in the parking lot after, but when, when you actually go to the board meeting room and then you're in the parking lot afterwards. Or now, what if a quorum of you stayed on this call after the official board meeting had ended and talked about some of the issues that we've talked about tonight or talked about agenda items that are going to be on your next board agenda? That would constitute an illegal meeting. So if, if it's about board business and it's not in the public forum, then it is technically an illegal meeting. Unless it meets one of the exceptions, for instance, um, collective bargaining falls outside of the Freedom of Information Act. It's just not a meeting for purposes of FOI.
Okay, so the, the distinction is, which is always what I learned, is board business?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And you also have to remember that there's the appearance, even if, if you're in the parking lot after a board meeting and a quorum of you are talking about, um, when you're gonna be able to travel again and how much you're looking forward to that, that's not board business, but anybody seeing you there is certainly going to think you're talking board business. So while not technically illegal, it creates a perception problem.
Can I, can I ask a question about that? Because, um, at one point, Cabe was making the recommendation for boards to get to know each other as human beings and to have pot, potlucks and things, but not to talk about any board business. Is that no longer a recommendation?
No, that is a recommendation. And actually, I would have, if we were in person, I would have done a, a little activity when we began tonight so that you might all get to know each other better. I'm not sure, ever, I, I, let me be very clear that potluck might be what we were talking about. Let me put those two words together. We do, we have suggested that some boards, uh, benefit from a social gathering. A picnic in the summer, again, you know, you're gonna have to be socially distanced and I guess you have to bring your own food under the CDC guidelines right now. But putting all that aside, what's important is the board and invite your spouses or significant others. Because they are the best people to police you and make sure that you don't end up talking about board business. Cause if it's just the members of the board, you're gonna slip into a discussion of board business.
Okay, so that, that, um, that does remain because I think it would be great for this board because I have a lot of respect for the board. And we don't do things socially and we have at different times at the board and didn't talk about board business. I think it was a healthy thing. There was also a recommendation Cabe used to have about the board chair getting to know each board member and, and going out for a cup of coffee or something. Is that still recommended?
Yeah, that, that's something that some board chairs do find very helpful. And, and particularly as new members come on the board, that one-on-one conversation, you know, to, to help understand what, what is, what are the interests of the various members of the board? What, what are they passionate about? Uh, why do they serve? But my question, the question I always ask boards when I meet with them eye to eye, is what motivated you to serve on the Board of Education?
And just, and Stephanie, I think you already, I'm sure, have spent countless hours doing that and thank you. I don't want to infer that we're not doing that. Thank you, Patrice.
You're welcome.
So Joe, you had a question on, 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 on an 11-member board. So Joe, you had a question on, on, on an 11-member board, a quorum. That would be six people, correct? It's, it's the majority. So, okay.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie. So my other question is, if I have, because I live in Hebron and I have, there's five of us from Hebron and we, at a gathering, a school function or whatever, and we do talk about things that are developing at the school, is that constituted as a illegal meeting?
It, it's, it's five of the 11 members?
Correct.
Then no.
Thank you.
But, but I would say this, being from a different town, and I love you guys from Hebron, but the perception wouldn't be great. And Patrice mentioned perception before. Include, include us, your other friends from the other towns.
Got you, Judy. Thanks.
And, and it's really the same issue when, I'll take it in a different context. Members who serve on a Board of Education of the same political party, they can caucus as, as members, Democrats or Republicans, without it being an illegal meeting. But if they do that on a regular basis, that normally board, in Boards of Education in Connecticut, usually only caucus are on the selection of the board chair. If they're caucusing on a whole host of policy issues, that creates divisions, partisan divisions, much like you could inadvertently create divisions among the three towns if, if that's become the regular practice.
Yeah, we gotta watch out, we have to watch out for Andover because they only got two members.
And, um, Patrice, um, how about unaffiliated in that? Could Democrats meet with an unaffiliated or Republicans meet with an unaffiliated?
Not as a caucus, no. They have to be members of the same political party, serving on the same
Gotcha.
Public agency.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions for Patrice? Okay. I think what I'd like to do is, is as a group, come up with our communication plan along with Scott. And I think, I think it's really important that we walk away with something very, very clear tonight. Make sure that it's shared with the members that aren't here and the new member that, that, um, that comes in to replace Dave as well. So, um...
Stephanie, could I just make a recommendation too with that plan?
Sure.
Is that maybe we can incorporate the virtual meetings? And, and the, if we do go back to regular in-person meetings, you know, I think the virtual meetings can be an asset to, you know, both, you know, you and all of us. You know, I think it's, I think it's become a, a convenience, you know, for us to be able to, to include more people in the meetings. And as, as Joe has said many times, in terms of the, um, being able to call in, you know, we're all calling in now. You know, whereas before, when the in-person meetings happened, it was a little bit more difficult for those people calling in to, to, to hear and to speak. So I would ask that somewhere in that plan, you know, if we do go back to in-person meetings, that maybe we can have some flexibility with having virtual meetings also. Thanks.
Okay. I don't know, that's, this is something I'll look into once we can go back to in-person meetings, if we will be allowed to also have some virtual meetings as well. Because, you know, those weeks where, there are some weeks we have three meetings and it's tough getting out of the house. This is certainly, um, you know, a, a good way. I think we do have more participation when we do have some, some of these. And, um, yeah, I don't know what the rules are with that. It's definitely something we're going to have to look into if we'll be able to continue doing some Zoom meetings.
It's one, the Freedom of Information Act was written before Zoom was created. So the act talks about meetings by telephone and the rules there are that as long as the public is, it's a noticed meeting, that the public would be able to hear the conversation and, and know who is speaking, that that would meet the requirements of a public meeting. So while the act might not be updated during a special session this summer, I certainly expect that the interpretation will be that those same parameters would apply to GoToMeeting, Zoom, or whatever other platform. And it, the key is that it's accessible to the public and the public knows who is speaking.
Stephanie, this might be a great opportunity, something I've been requesting for, at least since I joined the board seven years ago, is multiple meetings a month. You know, I do a lot of these Zoom conferences for my, my work. They've been very effective. We could potentially reduce a lot of the, you know, four-hour marathon meetings that we have. I think that's where Vinnie's trying to go with this is that, you know, we could, we could eliminate by having two meetings a month, take care of the financials, break it up to however you and Scott would like to, in the board, have a discussion on that and figure out, hey, how can we cut these in half? Maybe we break it up to finance and personnel issues in one meeting. And then the rest of it is information and subcommittee meetings. You know, there, I think this is a great opportunity for us to, to, to shorten our meetings for sure.
Yeah. I think a couple of years ago, we, we talked about whether we should have one big meeting or, or two smaller ones. I, I remember a discussion like that. So maybe that is something we could look into. Judy, did you have something?
I was just going to say, if we had some of those shorter meetings virtually, those of us who tend to work late could actually stay at, at our work site and go back to work, you know, so would participate in the meeting if there were multiple meetings a month. And it, it might make the other meeting, our main meeting, shorter, more concise and not multi-hour.
Okay. Um, that's something we can, we can definitely discuss for, for the next school year. Yeah. I like it. Anybody else have any comments about the, the Zoom or anything before we start talking about our communication plan? Okay. Anybody want to start? I'll leave it open.
Just, what are, what are you looking for, Stephanie, as far as communication?
Well, I, I, I think the, the main question is, is with email. Do we feel comfortable and do we think we can avoid the problem of the reply all if we are, if we do go ahead and CC the entire board with questions for Scott? And, um, you know, that, that's the, that, I think that's the big one in, in my mind. How, how do we want to go about that? Do you want to narrow it down and channel your questions through me? Or do you want them to be open for the entire board to see? That's, that's, I think that's the, the major decision right now. And, um, and then we have to all understand what the expectations are as far as responding.
Stephanie, it's Kathleen. Just to, uh, just going back towards what you were talking about before about, you know, understanding like the complexity of, let's say, the facilities committee. And then I'm on the finance subcommittee and what they're doing may have a direct impact on that. I'm, I'm wondering, like, when people ask questions, I love to see their questions because there's some things I just don't know about, just like the fact that you would think that I would know more than I, I do. But like facilities, like the word EFS, you know, never heard of until this couple, last couple of years. But, um, it, is it, how is it possible then when Scott answers the question to know, uh, us, when Scott answers a question, to know what the answer is so that, you know, so you may be intrigued by the question, but then need to know the answer? I don't know what the process is for that.
So what I'm hearing is if someone asks a question and Scott answers it, and then they have a further question, that's when an individual communication should happen, either by phone or an individual email, a discussion in so, in, in the office. But any further questions should be on an individual basis. Patrice, am I right by saying that?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I think, Kathleen, I think that if, if I'm given a question that CC to the board, I would respond, I would, I would give the factual information responding to the entire board so that everybody would get that answer. Is your question, if it's about like a technical issue that you, that a board member may not understand, how would they understand the conversation?
I think, I'm just thinking of myself and yeah, sometimes I don't understand.
Okay.
So then, you know, it might not be the factual information that I'm missing, but it might be, I don't know, the details or the logistics of, you know, that might impact how we vote later on, which I think is the biggest issue because sometimes we sit together in a meeting, but especially virtually, I'm not quite sure where I should go because I don't have all of the information. And like Patrice is saying, um, what I'm hearing is that we can't always speak to one another. So then you may be making a, a vote on limited information and then you find out later, well, maybe that wasn't the best thing to do. So I think for myself, I'm just thinking of what is the best way to gain information as particularly about items that I might not have all the information on.
Can I, can I, I ask a follow-up question?
Go ahead, Judy.
So if I ask, I, I don't know what the basic question might be, but of Scott, and it's a question the whole community could know, there's nothing about particular board business, and Scott answers me back and the whole board back, then that's fine. And what I'm just, if there was something, I'm thinking that, I feel like we've always been good that if there's something that's legal about personnel or any individuals that we've, we've never done that because that's just not appropriate. So then Scott would just say, um, I apologize, you know, that will most likely be an executive session. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I don't want Scott to get, be getting a plethora of, you know, questions be on top of questions that people are asking. You know what I mean? You'll be spending all day answering board questions and not getting any of your work done.
I thought the process that we had, this Jessica, sorry, that time could go, I think it was for, I think it was for the budget. I can't remember right now. But where Pat gave us kind of like a deadline for time to have questions submitted by, that gave her time to gather all those questions, get the information together. So maybe if we have some sort of timeline that fits for you, Scott, where questions for that next meeting have to be submitted by a certain time. So it's not throughout the whole, you know, week that you're getting those. And then that gives you that time to prepare also.
As a, as a follow-up to that, I just thought of the question. So I, I think somebody put out an email requesting, and this was around the 1% and the 2% municipalities keeping money versus regional school districts. And the question wasn't asked or answered correctly with enough information. And when the superintendent sent that correspondent out to the full board, I replied per the, the boards, the person who asked the question to, to superintendent.
You can go, girl.
I asked the question for additional information from the superintendent, which I believe I CC'd on the board. Is that the wrong approach to do? Or is it because it's, the question was never answered? Or is that when you take an individual approach and say to the superintendent, hey, Pat, or hey, Scott, in this situation, I didn't understand that, your answer. Is that, is that, because I'm, if, most of us sometimes, like Kathleen, I think we're all trying to say this, we're not experts in everything. So if I'm dealing with an education level, that is not my expertise. So, um, and I think this is where the slippery slope comes in. We're, we're, we're trying to be informed, but we're also being in violation of, of, of codes, the Freedom of Information Act. So is, in that scenario, would, would we be just better off dealing directly one-on-one with the superintendent, but the full board doesn't get to see the reply?
Again, I, as, as long as it doesn't cross the line between now 11 people are calling the superintendent saying, um, could you explain this to me because I didn't understand it? If, if you as one individual call and say, listen, I, this wasn't clear to me, could you perhaps resend something that is, is more clarifying? Because maybe other people have the same question. I think that makes a lot of sense.
I think, I think what happened, Joe, that's the perfect question, in my opinion. I think what happened years ago, and Tom Mooney was there, and I think someone from Cade might have been there, maybe Bob Raider, but anyway, Bob Saminsky was there. And I think what they decided was then, if that was information, everybody should know that would go out kind of in the weekly update because it would need to be clarified anyway, was like, um, like as a leader, as a teacher even, you make those decisions all the time, I think, you know? So, so if something needs to be explained further, you explain it further and you, you don't get into personnel, that's not appropriate. But you can get into more, maybe where the state legislation is on 1% versus 2% or something. Would, would that make sense, Patrice?
Yeah.
And again, Patrice, from, from where I'm working from, I can always update the board with information. So that if Joe asks a clarifying question and I recognize that there's additional information that would be helpful for, for Joe to understand this particular issue, then I should also share that with the board, whether it be a weekly update or, or as a separate email, just to make sure that, that everybody understands the issue and I'm not missing somebody who may not simply have had a chance to phone in or something.
Exactly. And just know that those communications that you send do become public records unless they're exempt under one of the exceptions.
Right. Right. But again, if it's factual information we're sharing, then
Exactly.
No harm, no foul.
Right.
Okay. Can I expand on that then? So let's say, um, you know, we, we, a question does come to me and then a, a board member follows up with a phone call. So it's a one-on-one conversation. And it, it moves into the, well, what do you think about this? You know, what do you think we can do? Are we allowed to have that conversation on a one-to-one basis?
You are certainly, you're not prohibited by FOI from having it.
Okay.
So then it becomes a professional judgment as to, you know, does it make sense to have it one-on-one or is it better to share your, your recommendation with the full board?
Right. But I'm assuming then, in, in that case, that may not be something I'll necessarily share with the entire board.
Right.
I, maybe I would. Maybe it's, it's an important issue and, and it would be helpful for the board to understand where the superintendent's coming on that particular issue. But it may just as well be that I have a philosophical conversation with a board member and don't necessarily feel it's necessary to share it with the entire board.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
Sue, do you have any questions?
No. Okay. So, um, so are we starting to firm up our email communications? Is everyone understanding what, what's going on and what to do? And what to avoid? Yeah. Okay. So just to, go ahead.
Maybe Stephanie, you and I can meet and put something out to everybody so the board members who aren't here tonight get all the same information.
I, I like that idea because I feel really comfortable with what you're saying. The goal is to provide communication to the board and we never, ever want to veer into, you know, personnel or any kind of legal... and we never ever want to veer into, you know, personnel or any kind of legal thing. It's, it's inappropriate. And everybody wants to feel that they have the same, I guess, access to information as every other board member. The chair, of course, has more. But I, you know, I think being a three-town board, you know, through time, like I'm saying, not me, but various folks have thought that. So I think this can just be helpful. Vinnie, I can see you, you're so funny. But, but various people have, have thought that. So in any case, I, you know, I think we love our community, right? So we just want this to go best way forward. And I completely trust Stephanie and Scott to do this.
Patrice, would you be okay if we, if we ran a draft by you to?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be good. Some kind of just bulleted brief, you know, something that we can reference would be, would be helpful. Now, when it comes to if, if, if someone thinks that, that there is a violation, what is the proper channel to go through?
My hope is that they would either raise it individually with their colleague under the assumption that it's an unintentional violation. And that happens to everyone, you know, the best intentioned people. Hit reply all when they shouldn't hit reply all. Or that they would bring it to you, Stephanie as chair.
Okay.
Obviously, the last resort, any individual has the right to file a freedom of information complaint. Members of public bodies filing complaints against each other is not usually conducive to the goal of doing what's best for students in the community and working together.
Stephanie, are you okay with taking individual questions from board members without CCing the whole board?
Absolutely. If, if you, if there's something you want to just, just go through me to Scott or, or to Scott directly, then that, that would be fine with me as well.
Stephanie, you are a teacher as well. So I'm going to ask you to use your teacher skills to then determine and discern, gee, is this information that would help the whole board? And when you do your board chair update, to give that information. Like I've said a few times, I'm, I love the Ram Board, I'm on my way out. I want to see this, a healthy, functioning board for the next folks. And it, you know, and that can be done through the superintendent's report, the board chair's report. But you know, sometimes you discover that's a great question or something I should share. And we're blessed to have, you know, both of you at our helm as excellent educators.
I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or concerns from anybody?
Well, are we, are we establishing communication protocols? Is that what you want to do, Stephanie?
Yeah, and, and we've, we've come to where we can CC the board with questions to Scott. And Scott can reply. If anybody has further questions, then it should be done on an individual basis to Scott. If you want to ask a question through me, that's always an option. But reply all is your enemy.
And Scott, you're okay with taking the, the questions? Or do you want to, and then do like in a weekly update, answer from like Pat had done some things or question from board member and have the answers? I, I think it really comes down to how you and, you know, how, what your workload's going to be. It's always been about the workload of the superintendent. So I, that would be, I think, up to you and Stephanie.
Yeah, no, I'm absolutely fine with that. And I think it's going to depend partly on the question and what the board needs it for. So for example, if it's a question that's just simply a, a nice-to-know question, I can use that in the, in the update. But if, obviously, if you have a subcommittee meeting and this is a question that you need this data for or information for, I'll certainly just respond to it then to the board outside of the weekly update. So yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
And Scott, I think if, if you get a question where you really have to dig for an answer, it's, it's fine for you to say, and encourage you to say, you're going to have to give me a few days for this. And, or is it okay if I address this in so much time? You know, I, I don't want you to feel, because you're taking on such a big role, the pressure, if, if you need time, then, you know, to, to communicate with us that you need time.
I'd say, and most of my answers are going to be, I'll get back to you next year, so.
I think Scott too, I appreciate your flexibility. But also if we start hammering you with too many questions because we don't know that other people are reaching out individually, you know, you can always rein us in. And I certainly appreciate that because I know how busy you're going to be, especially not knowing what you're going to do. So you can even prepare, but please let us know.
I appreciate that, yeah. No, I'm sure it'll be fine.
I had, I had, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I was going to ask if you need, if that answered your question.
Yes, that's perfectly, so we have a clear direction of what, what you, what you would like as board chair and what Scott would like. So that's, that's fine. And I think we've gotten the ground rules. I do have another follow-up question on regarding communication outside of the board, since we're talking about communication. What is, what is, we have a board policy that, you know, states that the board chair is allowed, the only one that's allowed to deal with the media. So I just want to make sure that we, we, we're going to still adhere to that policy. Since we're talking about effectively communicating, we do not want to be speaking to the media without going through the board chair.
Yes, we do have a policy on that.
Okay, well, I mean, we're laying the ground rules on, for the Board of Ed, right? So I mean, board policy states that if we are approached by anybody from the media that we, we, we deal directly through the board chair.
Correct.
Thank you.
Joe, are you asking them to include that in the brief write-up that they do?
I would like that, just so, I mean, we have a board policy and I just want to make sure that, since we are talking about all of this, it's, it's clear. We do have some new board members who are only been on here for their first year. I think we, we don't do a very good job as a board. I think most boards, I've, when I've attended some of the Cade meetings many years ago, what this top, Mr. Raider brings it up all the time is about educating and having a policy for new members coming onto the board. And we never do that. I didn't get it when I got on this board. It's like drinking from a fire hose and, you know, someone needs to educate the youngins coming on board, you know?
Well, I, I think that's fair because I, I mean, the, the other thing is, it's a regional board. You know, so like Kathleen, when you say, you know, like, and you know so very much, I admire your wisdom and your knowledge base, but there are some things that are unique to a regional board. So that's a good point. I don't think we can mandate though, someone suggested at one point that we mandate new board training. I am, I am unaffiliated, but I am vehemently opposed to that because they're citizen volunteers. I think we could suggest or recommend something. I don't think we can mandate training for new board members. But whatever everybody agrees to.
If I can just remind you that Cade will come out and do new board member orientation for new and existing board members as, as part of your membership. So you don't have to send anyone anywhere or, or mandate. You know, we can accomplish a lot in an hour at the beginning of, of one of your regular meetings.
Thank you.
Stephanie, yeah, I did. You know, when we were saying that the chairperson, everything goes through the chairperson, are we referring to social media as well?
I, I don't think you, I don't think you can. I do write things on social.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking Stephanie. I guess, you know, if we have a policy and we're stating that everything needs to go through the chair for comment, I'm not quite sure how we can exclude social media. If, it's the same avenue, newspaper, social media is hand in hand. So I just want.
I'm, I am a libertarian and I will tell you, I am vehemently opposed.
I'm just asking what.
I, I, I hear you and I want to weigh in. So thank you for sharing that. I, whenever I write anything on social media and I'd be happy to share it with anybody, I always write writing as an individual. And I am very careful about that and I always write and I, I, I do. I have the greatest respect for the volunteerism on this board, the compassion, the commitment. But I really, you know, we still live in the, the greatest country on the planet with individual freedoms and liberties. And we, that, that would be, I might, I might challenge that in court myself.
Yeah, Judy, I'm completely fine. If you're putting that statement as an individual, then any one of us could make that statement to the papers as well. It's, it's social media, paper, it's hand in hand. And if we're saying, speaking as an individual, we all have that freedom of, of freedom of speech and right. That's all I'm stating.
Well, maybe Scott and Stephanie, that's something, that's something that you two can debate and even confer with Patrice or, you know, Jessica Ritter or whomever makes, makes sense.
I think, Sue, and correct me if I'm, if I'm not reading you correctly, but I, you know, like there, there are times when an event might occur, occur that we want, the, the newspaper reaches out to Stephanie for a comment from the board. Or let's say they reach out to any of you. If there was, you know, like the recent, you know, distress within the streets of, of our own country. You know, if somebody wanted to know, what is the Ram Board's thoughts about that? I, but I hear you saying is that that should be directed to Stephanie if the River East, the local newspaper reached out or the Hartford Current.
I'm not, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify what, what the rule is. And if we're, I think we all just stated that for the papers, everything goes through Stephanie. I would like it clarified on, if, if it's for the papers, it has to be for social media. They're hand in hand. It's the same thing. If we want to state that we're going to put speaking as an individual, then we're, we're all free to do that in the papers or in social media.
Okay, so we better be careful because I'm considering a libel lawsuit, friends, for things that were labeled or written that were inappropriate and that were saying that we did illegal things by our own agendas. That was inaccurate, incorrect. And I think our former board chair made those statements. So if we write as individuals, you know, we can, we can put Ram on the map, everybody, because I, I will challenge this to the nth degree. And I like to be collaborative and communicate. But I think when we're being attacked, and we have been attacked, we were called swear words, we were called assholes, we were called like the scum of the earth. And for us to say in our opinion that it's best to gather all facts and not to slander or libel people, speaking as an individual, and that the United States of America is based on the presumption of, of innocence, I, that is acceptable.
Patrice?
I think that for me, there is a distinction between when a member of the media seeks the position or the opinion or of a, a board of education. Those communications by policy are generally made by the, by the board chair or sometimes delegated to the superintendent. I do think that there is a difference between that and individuals choosing to express their personal opinions through their own social media accounts. I would say, however, that while there is that distinction, the perception issue also plays into that. Because many people, when you speak, view you as speaking, whether it's through your private social media or, or not, as speaking on behalf of the Board of Education. So you, you can put the disclaimer that I'm, this is my, this is my personal viewpoint, but just understand that some people will have a, a different perception.
But can I just add, if, if, if anyone was, was participating, let's say in Marlboro, the Andover or the Hebron Facebook page, which is not a news organization, it's a social media. And one of the posters asked, what is the, how does the Ram Board feel about whatever the issue might be? Then to Sue's suggestion, rather than the individual board member who might be participating in that, you know, that would be a point, I think, where they would step back and say, okay, if we're here again, just like we would do in the newspaper, if we want the Ram Board's belief on, or to, you know, take on this, then Stephanie would be the one we would go to and ask her, can you post on the, you know, like you did in the newspaper? Can you post on the Hebron Facebook page?
So Scott, that's fine on the mascot changing. But when we're literally being called criminals and assholes and Amy DiMaria is calling out Vin Colonna by name and saying, when we haven't even received an FOI complaint, then you will be personally named. I think we can weigh in as, as individuals. And I am 100% comfortable with Patrice or whomever looking at this. I don't want to incur additional costs because I think the money should go to our kids and this is outrageous. But I, for one, have never criticized anyone. I am just sticking up for my board members, saying these are citizen volunteers. And be careful, my time is small, short. I mean, I'm almost done, everybody. You want to attract future board members and not have them targets out there who can be called? I mean, I wouldn't even say some of the swears that we were being called. It was really, especially on the Marlboro site. And, you know, Sue, it just so happens, I'm not blaming you or saying it was you, but it was someone who has always looked out for you, who has made these, made these statements. So that also perception seemed that way. Scott Flair is not here today, but I would, I would imagine that he from Marlboro agrees. Jean Wilson is not, is also not here. Now I took the high road and was very neutral. And Patrice, I'm happy to have you review any and all of my comments or statements.
And, and Scott, just to follow up, these, the social media isn't just on, you know, town websites. They're on the newspaper websites as well. So, so the comments that were being made is directly on the newspaper, Facebook pages as well.
Gotcha. And I, and I would agree that that, if, if the Ram Board is going to have a statement that regardless of whether it's a social media like that or actual article that it should come from, Stephanie in terms of.
But that, but that's not what we're talking about, Scott. And I think, I think the challenge here is, there was a misleading article that hit at the heart of all of our reputation that said, after whistleblower complaint that was inaccurate, our characters were attacked in our communities. I go for walks with my dogs, numerous people talk to me, business owners called me, politicians called me, so many people reached out to me. And, and I, you know, with the greatest of respect, Scott, you may not be aware of how ugly or personal that got. And it's not acceptable. We're citizen volunteers, it's not acceptable.
I think, I think I want to point out, Judy, you had a good point about attracting other board members, new board members to the board. attracting other board members, new board members to the board, but there's an even bigger picture here about the damage that it's doing to the school system as a whole and our ability to attract a good candidate for superintendent if, 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 you know, the damage is done now. It's, it's out there and, and the articles are out there.
Stephanie, do me, Stephanie, do me a favor, which part? Because I've only said what a wonderful community we are, how much respect I have for my fellow board members, how, how my kids have received merit scholarships.
What I'm, what I'm saying. No, 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 I'm not saying you damaged it. I'm saying that the overall, the, the complaint, the newspaper coverage, you know, we, I, I think we need to try to move forward and, and think about the, the the school system and the reputation and the students and, you know, the ability to attract a, a quality superintendent. And with this going on, it's, it's incredibly damaging that, that, that the newspapers, what, what they've written and people who have been quoted and I'm, I'm very concerned about, about the, the whole thing. And I.
Stephanie, I 100% actually agree. And just because I've opened this and put myself out there, I'd be happy to get my comments and send them to the board or something or make them available. Because all I have said is how much respect I have for citizen volunteers who spend countless hours, you know, researching facilities to make sure we have a strong, robust facility that our education, my own children have both received huge merit scholarships to their universities of choice. And I want that excellence for everyone. So, so I, I mean, only because I'm speaking and someone could be confused and say that I'm being combative, I am not. You know, I'm, I've had meetings since 6:30 this morning and I'm exhausted. And I haven't had dinner. So you probably hear my low blood sugar, really in my over-caffeinated state. But I have only said positives. I adore the Ram teachers and community. And I, I think nothing but the greatest thoughts about our leadership team, our staff. And I've been consistent and, and clear. And I know nobody's singling me out, but I'm one of the few people who has taken this on a little bit with social media because I dealt with a blindsided, one-sided, as Patrice knows, four years ago, social media blast that was so unfair. And I promised myself, as I prayed to God and was down on my knees, that I would never do that again. I would defend what is good and right and just. So there we go.
Patrice, would you like to comment?
Um, I, I want to concur with the remarks that you made in terms of for a school district, when you are recruiting top-level administrators, even teachers, they do look at what's going on in the district and how a board is functioning together. And I would just observe from my own experience at the state level, sometimes the best thing to do, once the facts about any controversy have been put out there, is to move on. That, that little good for anyone comes of, of going back over that same turf or in feeling that it's advantageous to continue to respond to people that, that may want to keep a controversy alive.
Are there any other comments or questions? No? Well, um, I'm feeling comfortable with our communication plan moving forward, if you are as well. We'll, Scott and I will put together a bulleted reference guide to communication. And certainly if there are any other questions, we can, we can, I've got Patrice on my speed dial. And we can call her up again. I can, I can ask her questions. We can email. You know, she, Cabe's a wonderful resource and, and I think, I think we're, we're ready to move forward.
Stephanie, are we, Scott, are you going to continue with the weekly update? Or is that too much for you at the, at this present time?
No, I am. I'm happy to do that. I think that's important to keep as much information flowing. Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, can I ask one question, too? On my other boards, Scott and Stephanie, we scheduled a July meeting because of the reopening and everything that's going on. Are we considering scheduling a meeting in July to discuss, you know, those activities?
I haven't spoken to Stephanie about it, but Sue, I think that's a really great idea. We're, we're going to have to. I mean, there, I, I can tell you that there are going to be questions that I'm going to have that I can't move forward with without the board's input. So I'm not sure at this point how we would move forward without having something, we can't wait until August, the end of August. I mean, at that point, the decision's got to be long made. So, yeah. Yeah.
I wish Connecticut would make up their mind. Massachusetts, they're planning out. Yikes.
We're told, we're told maybe Thursday. But again, whatever may be absolutely not helpful at all, but let's hope it's a little clearer than what we've had up to this point.
We also have to set a, a month, July or August, when we want to interview the hiring firms as well. So that's, that's another, that's another meeting we'll have to schedule. Decide when to schedule it.
If we could schedule that in July, I am supposed to, God willing, be away in August.
Okay. I'll work on it.
Can I just ask, in the past, when you, if we're adding a board meeting, do you, do you follow the same logic of when it usually falls? Like the fourth Monday or, or a meeting like that, do you, do you survey the board and just find a date that works best for everybody?
Yeah, we, we survey the board. And I, I think Mondays, I get a little tiresome sometimes for some people. I think some people like to mix it up a little bit, although Mondays is predictable. So we can put a couple of dates out there and, and, and poll people.
Nothing like coming off a nice weekend for an all-night meeting on Monday.
That was rough. I tried to keep it going as fast as I could. Oh, my goodness, that was a, that was a marathon. Okay, are we all set? All right, I, I don't see.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Patrice.
Thanks, Patrice.
Thank you.
You were great. And, and I'm sure I'll be in contact with, with more questions and as we go forward, so.
Look forward to hearing from you and I wish you all well.
Thank you very much. I don't think we have any public, as we didn't in the beginning.
Motion to adjourn?
I didn't see who talked, who talked, who was speaking.
Rob will second. Vinnie, Vinnie made the motion and Rob seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Have a good summer, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Good guys.
Thank you, Patrice.